Good evening and welcome. This is a public hearing of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Evanston. The zoning ordinance directs this body to hear applications for major variations, special uses, and appeals from decisions of the zoning administrator. Depending on the type of matter, this board will either make a final determination or send its recommendation to city council. Melissa, will you call the roll, please?
Mary McCauley.
Present.
Scott Gingold.
Present.
Lisa Deacon. Mary Beth Burns.
Here.
Violetta Cullen.
Here.
Myrna Ervallo.
Here.
And Kirill Miranchev.
With five members present, we do have a quorum tonight. Also present tonight are zoning planner Melissa Klotz and planning and zoning administrator Scott Mangum. This is a formal meeting, and there are rules that govern our proceedings. Most importantly, only one person speaks at a time so that all testimony may be accurately recorded. Anyone who wishes to address the board regarding any matter on the agenda will have the opportunity to do so at the appropriate time. Our procedure is to hear from staff on the documents on file, and then receive testimony and other evidence from the applicant or appellant. Next, persons who wish to make a statement regarding the matter may do so at that time. Any person with a legal interest in property located within 500 feet of the subject property may present evidence, reasonably question witnesses, or seek a continuance of the hearing. When also reporting and opposing testimony and statements have been heard, the applicant or repellent will be given the opportunity for rebuttal or a closing statement. Then the board will close the record and begin deliberations. All testimony will be under oath. Although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence, please limit your testimony or statement to your personal knowledge. When you address the board, please state your name and address and sign in on the provided sheet. Our meetings are audio and video recorded. Please make sure that you are at a microphone when asking questions or making statements so that you can be properly recorded. All proceedings are subject to broadcast at a later date. Any matter not concluded at tonight's hearing will be continued to our next regularly scheduled meeting. There are three items on the agenda tonight. Is 1239 Asbury here? Okay. And 1801 Main? You guys are here. And 3233 Central? All right, everybody's here. This is a very, very busy meeting, so I'm going to ask everybody to try to limit your comments and be as brief as possible while giving us all the information you feel is necessary. We do generally stop at 10 o'clock, so we're trying to get all of this in before then. So we can certainly use your help to those ends. The first item on our agenda tonight is the meeting minutes. And has everybody had a chance to read that first set of meeting minutes from January 16?
Yes.
Any changes?
None.
I move approval of the meeting minutes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I will note that those not voting were absent at that meeting. Next, we will go on to the meeting minutes from January 23. Any corrections, comments?
None. I move that we approve those meeting minutes as well.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I will... Did you say aye?
Aye.
There we go. I will note that those who weren't present did not vote. All right. So now we are moving on to the first case. But before I do that, if you have any intention of speaking tonight, maybe if you think you are or not, I do need to swear you in. So go ahead and raise your right hand, and you swear firm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings.
Excellent.
Thank you. All right. We will now start with the first case, which is 1239 Asbury, 1224 Dumpster Street. And Melissa, will you read that into the record, please?
Michael Finnegan, board member, applies for major zoning relief to subdivide a property to split Beth Emmett, the free synagogue, from a single-family residence in the R1 Single Family Residential District. The applicant requests 32.7% building lot coverage where 32.3% currently exists and 30% is permitted, zoning code section 6827, and 65.1% impervious surface coverage where 63.8% currently exists and 45% is permitted, zoning code section 68210, both for the synagogue property. The Zoning Board of Appeals is the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record include: variation application submitted November 16, 2017; zoning analysis updated January 29, 2018; plat of survey and site plan updated January 29, 2018; alternate subdivision options, historic significance sheet, image of property, aerial view of property, zoning map of property, preservation commission draft meeting minutes excerpt of February 13, 2018, and DAPR draft meeting minutes excerpt of February 7, 2018.
All right. If you'd like to come up and tell us about your project?
Hi. Thank you for taking the time to look at this. My name is Michael Finnegan. Do I use this? I'm new to this. Okay. So basically, there is a residential property on Beth Emmett Lot, and we've had several discussions with many people at the city, trying to figure out what to do with the property. Beth Emmett has no use for it and cannot afford to maintain it. And so, the plan that we came up with talking to different people, including people in preservation and in zoning and building, was to subdivide the lot and put the property on the market for sale because it is a landmark status building that we're hoping to find. And we've actually found potential interest, anyway, in someone who is a preservationist to buy the building and rehab it. So we wanted to make sure that we could get approval from the city to subdivide the lot. And after many discussions and different meetings with several DAPR meetings, and actually, right before the last zoning board meeting, thanks to your help, we came up with a plan that I think has the least amount of major variations, which are also existing conditions. So I think that pretty much sums it up, unless you have any questions.
Just to clarify for the record, when you say "major variations which are also existing conditions," what you really mean is that with respect to the lot that would be subdivided that is residential?
Correct.
That there are no changes to the lot proposed, and the variations are required to accommodate the subdivided lot?
Variations are required to accommodate the Beth Emmett side of the...
As it exists.
Correct. Yes.
I appreciate your having gone to the trouble to work as hard as you did with the city to come up with a plan that does not require any additional curb cuts on Asbury, and that essentially keeps the fundamental structures as they are. I mean, essentially, everything remains the same. As I understand it, the south property of the house is actually in compliance currently, and the only reason that the temple and the parking lot are no longer in compliance is because they're giving up that historic landmark building. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
And I also like to quickly add that on the south part of the property in the residential lot, there's a lot of concrete that exists currently for the playground, which would be removed if the subdivision were to go through. So that would increase the permeable surface on the Beth Emmett side, but it would further increase the permeable surface on the residential side.
Are you proposing that you're going to remove all that concrete before you put it on the market?
No.
Okay. So that would be up to the future owner.
Correct.
They may choose to leave all that concrete.
Well, we wanted to make sure that we could get permission from the city to subdivide the lot before we put it on the market. But because the way the playground is laid out, there's actually a jungle gym, I think, straddling that red line. And so, they would, you know, we're operating on the assumption that all that will be coming out.
Okay. Okay. Melissa, I was going to ask you a question, but you're walking away. So I'm going to ask you the question, and maybe you know the answer.
Okay.
So you're looking for 32.7% building lot coverage. Is that including what we approved a couple meetings ago as lot coverage, excessive lot coverage for the side entry?
The side entry? Oh, for the new...
For the overhangs and that whole entry on the west side.
That I cannot speak to. I don't know.
Okay. All right. I'm going to guess you don't know, Scott, offhand, and we'll have to wait for Melissa to come back.
As you noted, a previous variation was granted by the board for that. So that number includes the previous variation that was granted.
Okay. Do you remember what we granted on that variation? Anybody? Anybody who was here for that meeting?
I was here, and I don't remember the number.
Yeah.
I don't remember.
Was it significant or insignificant?
I think it was insignificant.
Okay.
There was not a large amount.
It was a small amount over the existing coverage because the parking lot was changing also.
Okay. It was maybe a percent and a half. Okay. Okay. But that's included in the 32.7 now, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So we went up 0.4 by subdividing?
Yes.
0.4%. Okay. Okay. And is there another project in the works for Beth Emmett that's going to come before zoning soon?
I believe, but I am not part of that process. But yes, there is a capital... They're renovating Beth Emmett. Correct.
Which is compliant and won't come before you guys.
Good answer.
What is your relation to this project?
I am a board member of Beth Emmett, and I was tasked with trying to find a solution for the Asbury House conundrum. And so, about two years ago, we started having conversations with the city. And initially, we had hoped that we could just tear it down because it seemed like the simplest option, but it was a landmark status building. And that was after we had the building department come out. I don't want to talk too long, but basically, then we went on to preservation, and preservation suggested that we subdivide the lot and try to market it because they were under the impression we could find a buyer, which we didn't think we could. And so, we were very excited to pursue that option. So that's how I'm here now.
Excellent. Are there any more questions?
Do you have a buyer in mind?
Not yet. But there's been some interest, but we have not talked to anybody.
Seriously, yet. Okay. Does the, for Melissa, I guess, maybe, does the landmark status of the residential lot, would that prohibit any significant changes to that building or the garage that themselves would require variations at some point? In other words, even though the subdivision is compliant right now, are we going to come get, are we going to get an application for variations from whoever buys that lot?
There wouldn't be anything due to its historic status, and it is a compliant lot. Everything on it is situated in a compliant location, so there isn't a need for a variation as it is currently. I couldn't say that a new owner wouldn't propose something more.
Okay. Anybody else?
No.
All right. Thank you very much. I really do appreciate the constructive criticism we gave about the site plan and the work on that.
Oh, yeah. I appreciate everyone's help, so thank you.
I think that we landed at a place that is much safer for the community and gets us the fewest amount of variance as possible.
Yeah.
So I think that's a good thing. So thank you very much.
Sure. You're welcome.
Is there anybody in the audience who's here to talk about this case? Okay. So if you'd like to sum up, you can, or we can just...
I'll just let you take it from here.
Okay.
So thank you very much for your time.
Sounds good. Thank you. And with that, we will close the record. Thoughts?
This seems like a well-thought-out and an artful solution to a problem. And I think the standards are all met here, particularly with respect to the least deviations necessary. There is no additional, there is no additional building that is causing the need for the variations. It's really just the subdivision. So in my view, we should, in my view, I'd vote to approve the project.
I agree with Scott. I feel like these are the minimum deviations needed, and I also vote to approve the project.
I agree both with Scott and Violetta. I'm good.
I'm in accord as well.
All right. So with that, we're going to go through the standards for major variation. There are seven of them. And the first is that the request of variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment, or property values of adjoining properties. In fact, for all intents and purposes, nobody's going to know what happened on this lot. The lot line will move, and the house will stay, and Beth Emmett will stay, and everything will look like it's always been. So I don't think that there will be any impact on the neighbors. So I do believe that that standard has been met. Number two, the request of variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. The intent of the zoning ordinance is to provide zoning that keeps buildings in contacts with their neighborhood and keeps their setbacks appropriate to the neighborhood. And by having a fully compliant single family, that certainly helps the situation with that particular property. And then there are no changes to Beth Emmett. So I do believe that that standard has been met.
I would just add that the solution also serves the purpose of allowing for the proper preservation of a historic property.
I agree. Number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. This is a unique property because we do have a single family in addition to a religious use on the same lot. And being able to separate those when that religious use no longer has a need for that single family is unique. So I do believe that that standard has been met. Number four, the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. I know that the goal here was to create the single family that had no variations because that is what's going to cause us trouble in the future. The religious institution isn't going to cause us trouble because you guys are going to keep changing that building. And so, I believe that by accommodating the extra percent, fraction of a percent of lot coverage lets us get to a place where we have a single family that is conforming and the religious isn't conforming. So I do believe that that standard has been met. Number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property or there is a public benefit. Now, I know that there's obviously a financial benefit to you to get rid, to release this property and have it have another use. I do think that by, again, getting this rather than condemning it or demolishing it, but being able to subdivide the property, get it to a single-family use in a compliant, with compliant setbacks, so that anyone can come and take care of it in accordance with preservation standards and all those sorts of things, is the public benefit. It is a listed house. It is a known architect. So I think that those are important things and important benefits to the City of Evanston.
I would just add, I think that the motivation here certainly, while there is, while there may be a financial motivation, that it is not the exclusive motivation here, which is what the standard requires, and that the property owner has carried the single-family home for quite some time on this property and just simply has run out of the ability to sustain it. And in my view, that is the primary motivation.
Thank you. Number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property. Obviously, the whole lot was platted long before the current applicants were interested in subdividing. And there, if you read back through all of the documentation, there were other reasons for getting that piece of property as additional parking, and then that never came to pass. And so, there are, there's a series of events here that are certainly outside of the control of the current board at Beth Emmett. So I believe that that standard has been met. Number seven, the request of variation requires the least deviation from the applicable regulation among the feasible options identified before the Zoning Board of Appeals. This is where I think you really win the case, which is, we've gotten down to just two variations, and those variations are very minor in the big scheme of things. And again, for all intents and purposes, nothing changes on those two lots. We're just moving the imaginary line. And so, you really have minimized the deviation. So I believe that that standard has been met. So with that...
I move in the matter 17ZMJV-0100 regarding the property at 1239 Asbury Avenue that we approve the major zoning relief requested, subject to the condition that the property be developed in accordance with the documents and testimony submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And with a vote of five to zero, you are approved. Good luck with your project. All right. Next, we will be hearing from 1801 Main Street, Robert Crown Community Center. Scott, will you read the documents?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, members of the public. For this item, Brian Foot, architect for the City of Evanston, applies for major zoning relief to construct a new community center with ice rinks, gymnasium, public library, preschool, multipurpose rooms, and exterior site work, including a new parking lot and athletic fields. This is within the OS Open Space Zoning District. Variations are requested for floor area ratio, for the number of parking spaces provided, for the drive aisle width within the parking lot, and for the number of loading docks proposed, zero. The city council is the determining body. The zoning board has the ability to make a recommendation to the city council on this case. Staff and design and project review committee have reviewed this project and are recommending approval. Thank you.
All right. Tell us a little bit about your project, please.
Hi. Good evening. Andy Tanucci, principal at Woodhouse Tanucci Architects, joined by Brian Foot here. Obviously, bringing the Crown Community Center to you this evening to request these four variances, the floor area ratio from an allowable of 0.15 to 0.18, parking lot dimensions. We actually are requesting a slight reduction in the drive aisle width, the parking spaces, as just mentioned, from a required 334 to 229, and on the loading docks from a required of two to zero. The existing site plan here, the Robert Crown Center, existing facility at Main and Dodge, obviously occupying the large park full of playfields, the Crown Center with the basketball court, a gymnasium, and an ice rink, as well as the tennis courts in the northwest corner. The aerial, for those of you I'm sure are all familiar. The site is about 700,000 square feet. The existing playfields, roughly 350,000 square feet. The building, 55,000 square feet. One sheet of ice, one large gymnasium, preschool. Most of this programming, all of this programming is staying, and we're increasing the programming with the new facility, which is why it's growing, and the existing parking lot of 148 cars. Our proposed site plan is here. Just a quick tour. The new facility in yellow to the southwest corner of the site, the more public and traffic corner of the site, moving it away from the neighborhood. The playfields are then more oriented to the north, three large turf fields. The parking lot then on the south, generally in the same location as it exists, and the tennis courts to remain to the northwest. Site size doesn't change, obviously. The proposed area dedicated to the fields reduces slightly. The parking lot, 229 cars, an increase from the 145 that are there currently. In the building, 90,000 square foot footprint, larger than the 55,000, 60,000 square foot existing. Here's the technical drawing that's in your package, the same drawing. Just to get to the specifics of the individual request, the floor area ratio, the building here in yellow. This has been a very public project over the last year, numerous public meetings where we went through many public programming sessions with stakeholders to understand exactly what the needs of the facility were, understand exactly what the facility should have in it, to arrive at the two sheets of ice, the larger gymnasium, the increased preschool, the addition of Evanston Public Library as well, has grown the facility then to this new size of 127,000 square feet as it counts towards FAR with the 90,000 square foot footprint. A quick tour of the building is really quite simple. Again, this is oriented to the southwest corner of the site, but the two large sheets of ice in gray to the northern portion of the building. The large yellow area on the first floor, which is on the left, is the lobby space that you enter into. That's the blue arrow. The library is in orange to the south side of the site, facing Main. The preschool in purple on the west. Upstairs, the big move that we made was to bring the large gymnasium to the second floor. We actually did this to get the footprint of the building smaller. We needed to bring meaningful square footage up into the building to reduce its footprint on the site. So we've gone to great lengths to reduce the size of the building on the site to make room for the playfields and the necessary parking. Which brings us, of course, to the parking. Here's the area of the parking lot itself, that 229 cars. To arrive at the number of required spaces, we went through a similarly intensive exercise. We did programming exercises with the Parks and Rec Department, Lawrence Hemingway, the City of Evanston, to understand exactly what the uses of the fields would be across seasons, across days, weekdays, weekends, to understand exactly how much playfield was necessary. We then had a traffic study done where we looked at, at the end of last summer, the facility in full use, anticipating use of the three fields, the library, the ice arenas, kind of all in full swing. We found out what our, I'm sorry, I don't have a pointer, but our main parking demand was the 225 cars. So we vetted that at 225 and obviously are proposing the 229. So here's that parking lot technical drawing that you have. To get to the question of dimensions, this is to speak to the reduced drive aisle requirement. This is a little bit complicated. This is specific to the site itself, so we've provided you these constraints just for illustration. The fields are to the north, and you can see what we're calling the north constraint. We've pushed the fields as far to the north as we can to not impact the existing parkway trees on Lee. Being good neighbors to the Lee Street neighbors has been a key objective of ours from day one. So pushing those playfields as far north as was responsible to preserve the parkway trees, we end up with that southern extent of the playfields, and we call that the north constraint of the parking lot. Then over to the lower left of the frame, you'll see the little red dot. That's the deep tunnel vent. So there's the stormwater deep tunnel that has a vent on our site that we have to avoid with the parking lot. Our drive aisle can't go over the top of that, so that becomes our southern extent for the drive aisle. Then we need to maintain a median, and the responsible median width to provide the necessary plantings is eight feet. So when you do that math from our north constraint down to our south constraint with the required median space, we end up with a 23-foot drive aisle, hence our request to you of the zoning variance. If not this 23-foot from 24-foot variance, the variance would be to request a reduction in trees on the site. We worked with Evanston. We presented this to the city, and it was the city's decision to proceed with pursuing the 23-foot drive aisle versus a reduction in that planting median on the middle of the parking lot. We think that the trees in the middle of the parking lot is more appropriate and better for the site. In addition, and this was brought up at DAPR, one of the times that we went to DAPR, the maximum demand is actually the winter concert that occurs at the Crown Center. That's the 1,000-seat arena. That's the maximum parking seat demand that the facility will see. And the parking lot will not be big enough. It's not big enough now to handle that 1,000-foot, 1,000-seat event, and it won't be large enough in its new configuration. So the plan is to actually rent space just north of the facility at the Valley Parking Lot, and then shuttle people to the facility as a way of keeping the users of the facility out of the surrounding neighborhoods to give them a nice, efficient alternative to the parking lot. And then just lastly, to the issue of the loading dock. This is a community center building. The requirement is these two loading docks. We have a loading zone off the north side of the building, one large loading zone off of Lee Street. The existing building also has a loading zone. We don't have a need for these two discreet loading zones off the north. We'll have this paved area. This is where the refuse containers will be, where the building will be served from from the north.
Can I ask a quick question on that?
Sure.
Will the loading route from Lee Street be restricted to service vehicles that are coming to service the center?
Yeah. There's really no way to access the center from that service drive. It's really intended specifically for servicing the building.
Okay. So no throughway from Lee to Main Street?
No. Correct.
Okay.
Parking lots don't connect. Drive aisles don't connect.
What, I'm sorry, where about, what about garbage? Where's garbage going to be taken out from?
Yeah. Out from the north side of the building, off to containers. There's kind of rectangles shown on the right
What, I'm sorry, where about, what about garbage? Where's garbage going to be taken out from?
Yeah, out from the north side of the building, off to containers, there's kind of rectangles shown on the right-hand side there.
Can you explain a little bit about what kind of vehicles are using that service drive, and with what frequency?
Well, that's a good question, and there's not very many. There's the, obviously the need for trash, there might be a need for maintenance of the facility, maintenance of the equipment in the facility, but it's not for employee parking or anything else like that.
So, so for example, you said that there's a refreshment area, right?
There's actually, there's not, there's not a full-time concession stand in the building, yeah.
So how does that get serviced, though? I'm assuming there are vending machines?
There are vending machines, yeah.
That's getting serviced off of this?
Presumably, yes.
How often does that happen?
I don't have the exact answer to that question.
Do you know what kind of trucks they come in?
Currently...
Box trucks?
Yeah, small, small box trucks, I think, are typically what service them.
Okay. What else might get delivered here? How about ice-making supplies? I don't really know.
Yeah, ice-making supplies, no, the machines for making the ice are there, the water comes from the building.
Sure.
Yep, so there aren't, there aren't large trucks that deliver those kinds of materials to the building.
Honored Chair and members of the committee, my name is Laura Biggs, and I'm the city engineer. So we did look specifically at the types of vehicles that are coming, but it's primarily just the normal city facilities vehicles that are more like pickup trucks and minivans and things like that that are bringing stuff back and forth. They provide by far the vast majority of the servicing of all of the equipment, and any other type of equipment is very infrequent. There is some amount of drop-off of food for like preschool, and when there's events, a lot of times that's just done through the front of the building because the space, the event space is essentially the lobby. And so it isn't really expected to be using this for large trucks. Probably the largest would be garbage trucks, which are coming generally a couple times a week.
Okay, and the library has no need for loading docks, anything like that?
No, they've not expressed that. I think they feel like once it's stocked, it's just sort of change out again, most likely just through the front of the building because it's fairly minimal. They do plan to operate a pretty robust book reservation system where a resident can reserve a book, and there are lockers where you can just come without even interfacing with library staff and pick up your book with the little PIN code that they give you. But again, that is, you know, a couple boxes, a couple times a week, sort of thing.
What about, what about equipment for the playfields? Where is that stored and, and where will that be stored and loaded and?
The playfields are anticipated to be turf fields, so there's, there's really not equipment. They have to be swept or groomed like once or twice a year. I would anticipate, those are, they're not being stored here on-site, so they would be stored off-site and brought to the facility just those couple times a year.
What about things like soccer goals, or I don't know what other purposes?
Those will be on the site.
And they'll stay.
And they'll stay on the site, yeah. Stored on the site when not being used, if you have to switch the field from one to the other thing, they have to be moved off.
Yes. A lot of the, and a lot of the equipment really is permanently there, and we're working with the architect to try to determine the best way to configure it so that things don't have to be disassembled and moved around, but there will be some facilities provided, and we're still working out the details because of the smaller storage stuff.
The lacrosse goal will stay, won't be there permanently, there's a field for it, it will be moved off of the field into a storage unit in the building.
That doesn't require a loading dock?
Right, yeah, just will be walked from the field to the building.
In that same vein, can I ask, this is not about loading, it's more about softball fields? They seem to have disappeared.
No, they're still...
Are they still there?
Yeah.
Yes.
The tennis courts remain, two softball fields remain.
So the softball fields are, are over on the rectangular turf fields?
That's correct, there, you can see to the...
The baseball, the one baseball diamond.
There's one on the bottom.
Yeah, got it, okay.
They're multi-purpose.
There you go.
Oh, good.
Beer?
I'm relieved, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
A critical part of the facilities.
If you don't mind, can we go back to parking for a minute?
Sure.
There's a lot of documentation to read through, and I think I picked up most of it, but I didn't see a rationale for why we're not providing more parking. If we don't have an impervious surface coverage issue, why aren't we providing more parking?
Well, we just simply don't have space on the site.
So if you go back to the, the main site plan, right, over there to the southeast, that looks like a lot of green.
Yeah, this is an, that's a good, true. It's an existing stand of extremely old elm trees on the site. Big, beautiful heritage trees on the southeast corner of the site.
Okay, so you chose not to, to show those as on the site plan, then?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, because if I had seen the trees, I would have understood.
No, I think you're right, and I wouldn't say so much that it was our choice as much as I would say it's our oversight, but I appreciate you...
Sure, okay.
... letting us off.
The second question is the part, let's go back to the dimensions.
Yes.
I totally get the, the deep tunnel vent.
Yep.
And I get the north field constraint.
Yes.
I'm looking at that swath of land between the turf field dimensions and that park, and that sidewalk. Why can't you shrink that? Because here's my concern, right? We've got 16-year-olds driving SUVs who are going to try and park in this parking lot. And although my concern is not them passing each other, my concern is the turning radius in. And when they can't make that turning radius, they're taking two spots. They're taking one and a quarter, and so now you've just reduced the parking, and that's my concern. So help me out with that.
I mean, it's, we could also ask the question, why are we not just making the soccer fields slightly smaller?
Right.
And really, it's just working from north to south on the overall site plan. You pick up your best guess for what's the dimension here necessary to maintain and preserve those parkway trees, you then...
But all of those are new trees, right, that you're planting?
Oh, totally true, and I'm just saying that as we work north to south, maintaining this large aisle to get people out of the parkway and circulating towards the building, and maintaining that small swath of green there to grow additional trees, to provide the safety from the fields to the parking lot, to provide a maximum dimension from the fields to the parking lot as a safety measure as well. Could it be taken there? Yeah, I mean, are there two feet on the site?
Yeah.
Of course.
Yeah. It just seems like that's, that there's got to be two feet somewhere on that site, whether it's that median. I know you'd like eight feet. I know that you can also get away with four, depending on the species of tree, right? So if you just choose a different tree, you can get away with four, and now we've got compliant drive aisles that kids in big cars can make turning radiuses into smaller parking spots, and then we're not losing parking. So it sounds like there are options here. Is that, that's what I'm hearing?
I would submit that, that the 23 feet is an adequate dimension for the vast majority of vehicular manipulation in a parking lot. And if there is, if there is currently, throughout my lifetime, as a user of Robert Crown, complaint, it's that there is so much impervious surface for the times that there is maximum usage of the parking lot, when most of the time, the parking lot is underutilized, and the maximizing green space, I think, is probably a greater priority.
I, I see that point, but I also, as, as the parent of a 16-year-old driver, it resonates with me that the cars are getting bigger, and they're not necessarily experienced enough to know to turn back and in, and back and in, to fit in a spot that has a smaller radius. And this is, I mean, it is by definition in a community parking lot, and there are lots of teenage kids driving to and fro. So, I mean, in my, in my view, sacrificing a foot or two of the green space at the, at the north constraint seems like a trade-off not worth making.
Because I'm looking big picture, right? This is something we don't want to rebuild in 20 years, right? We want this to be around for 100 years, right? And so let's not be short-sighted on what we see as parking problems. I mean, some of that happened, not to segue to a different topic, but with Ridge and the traffic lanes there, and the trees there, and now we've got this big problem with what's happening there. So I just think it might be wise to, to take a couple of feet and make sure that that's actually going to be functional for the future.
I also agree with Mary Beth in that I feel like it's the minimum variation. We don't even have to request that if we go to the standard of 24.
So these dimensions were, the 23 feet was vetted with both our traffic engineer and the fire department, and the feeling was that was, if the emergency vehicles were able to adequately move around, that that was probably a really good standard. Certainly, it's something that we can look at changing. I will say something that Andy, I think, just neglected to mention was that part of the distance between the fields and the parking lot is concern about runaway balls and foul balls and things like that getting to the parked cars. And so that's why it was, it was felt like every foot you could add to that width was actually a safety thing as well.
Which I, I understand, but I think there's also a landscaping solution to that, right? It might not be trees, it might be shrubs, and then you have an ability to shrink it just a little bit. And again, I have no concerns about fire trucks. Those guys know how to get where they need to go. That's not my concern. My concern are 16-year-olds who can't turn. So I appreciate the efforts you've gone to, I understand how hard it is to shoehorn everything in. I think this is a, this is a fairly, this is a minor change that brings big rewards in future use.
So we will look, we will look at the design, and we will look to increase that back to the 24-foot.
Ultimately, at the end of the day, we just recommend to city council on this anyway, so city council will probably weigh the pluses and minuses of that and make a decision on their own with our recommendation.
Well, I, I think one of the goals of this project is very much a community project, and the reason we stand here before ZBA is because we really want to provide something that is meeting the needs of the community, and I think that the thoughtfulness you're providing is something that we were actually looking for, that kind of feedback. So it's definitely something that I think we can look at and, and see what we can do.
Were there any more questions for the applicant? And I know I cut you off mid, like...
No, what was that?
You have a long meeting, we understand.
Okay. All right, is there anybody else who's here to talk about this project? Any comments? No, all right. So if you'd like to sum up, you can, or, you know, feel free. And with that, we will close the record. All right, comments?
I've been following the, the entire process because I've been, I've been in the Robert Crown neighborhood for quite some time, and there have been, I really have to applaud the group here for having put so much work into community input. I think that the project that you have formulated is, is very thorough. It took a long time to get through the packet, and I appreciate that. If, you know, you can speak to addressing these concerns on the width of the aisle, that would apparently be appreciated, but on balance, I think it's just a really well-done project, and I would certainly recommend approval to city council.
Yeah, I echo those sentiments, and with respect to the items we're considering tonight, although the parking variation in terms of the number of spaces is a significant deviation from what's required, I also would note that it's nearly, or perhaps more than double the amount of spaces on the site currently.
It's a 50% increase.
Just 50%?
Yeah, because I think they have 149.
Okay, so up to 250-something. So it's, it's a huge increase that's, that serves a current problem. I also think it's a, a really nice plan for the use of the entire property, and from what I've seen for the building itself. And so I also am, am in favor of recommending approval, although I, I do feel strongly that there's a way to not need the parking lot with, the parking aisle width variation in that I would recommend that you try to work on getting that back to 24, in my view. But otherwise, I think the variations requested are very reasonable.
I also like the project. I feel like the community has waited a really long time to get this project. The plan is great. I just feel like the parking is an issue, and if that were changed, I would vote for the project.
I agree with all my colleagues here. I believe that it's a good project. I appreciate the community input and you taking that into consideration. My other concern, yes, is also the parking width for those, just in general, the 24-feet, unless your parking is diagonally, then that's when you can reduce it a little bit more than, but then you're only creating one way. So that would be my only chime into the, into the project.
Yeah, unfortunately, public comments closed.
Oh.
Yeah, sorry. Okay, so I generally agree with my colleagues as well. I'm impressed with the ability to get all of that stuff in the building with the FAR only being over .03. That was a challenge, I'm sure, and I do think that with a little bit of tweaking, you guys can probably solve that. You've managed to solve everything else, so I fully believe you have the skill sets and the talent to get that done. So with that, we're going to go through the seven standards for major variation. One, the requested variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment, or property values of adjoining properties. We can see that they're actually reorienting the site in a way that makes much more sense to the neighborhood by taking the building and putting it on the major street corner, and putting the more desirable fields closer to residential. So I do think that that will, that that will increase the enjoyment to the adjacent neighborhoods. In addition, a brand-new sparkling building that's cool-looking is certainly going to help the neighborhood, so I think that that is, that standard has been met.
I'd just add that the significant amount of community involvement in this planning process reflects the community's input, that this development will have as little adverse impact as possible on the neighborhood, if any.
Excellent point. Number two, the requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. The intent of the zoning ordinance here is to be able to allow us to modernize things and spaces for the use of the community, and to have those things evolve with time as, as needs in the community evolve. And so this certainly, again, based on the huge community input on the project, certainly reflects the needs of, the needs and desires of the community. So I do believe that that standard has been met. Number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. There are a couple of things at play here, right? We know that whole north, north constraint, south constraint, deep tunnel, who knew deep tunnel was going to get in the way on this property? I'm sure nobody thought it was ever going to be in the way. So there's certainly that, and then you, you're trying to get a major community center in addition to all these outdoor activities, all to live on the same site. And so I think that that is a, is unique and peculiar to this property, so I think that that standard has been met. Number four, the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. If we held the applicant to the FAR, we'd be cutting out some component of that building, which again, is a little short-sighted for the life of that building. And so by getting all of that stuff in there that the community has put, had input on, I think is important. So I do believe that that standard has been met.
I also would just add, with respect to the parking aspect of the application, that requiring significant additional parking beyond the 225 spaces that are planned would also force the project to have to make cuts that related to the use of the property in a way that's not desirable.
Excellent point. Number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property. Clearly, it's a community center, there's no point, there's no, there's no profit motive here. The motive here is to create a great place for the community to gather and for kids to be able to interact and have great experiences and all that sort of stuff. So I do believe that that standard has been met. Number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in this property. Yeah, I don't even know how long that Robert Crown's been on that property, but it's been that property for forever. that property for forever, and it's not like we've got new vacant land to be building community centers on. So we're dealing with the hand we've been dealt, and so I think that that standard certainly has been met. And number seven, the requested variation requires the least deviation from the applicable regulation among the feasible options identified before the zoning board. I certainly think that they've met that standard with regards to the FAR for the project. I do not think that that has been met with respect to the, with respect to the parking lot. We've discussed that there are a couple of options and a couple of ways of looking at things and perhaps using shrubs instead of trees or different trees to be able to bring some of those medians down or those protective pathways down so that we can get a full drive aisle in the interests of safety. So the standard has been met for half of it, but has not been met for the other half.
I would suggest on that point that they, there has been extensive consultation on this with city engineers and others involved in the project, and it was an either-or in terms of the deviations that would be considered. And the consensus at that time was that the 23-foot lane for the parking was the preferable. So in that regard, I think that the standard has been met adequately to recommend approval to city council with perhaps a request that they consider alterations that would allow for an expansion of that lot. Would you agree with that?
I'd agree with the spirit of it. I'd propose it a little differently. I think that there is a more minimum change possible that we've identified tonight that would accommodate the 24, 24 over 23. And so what I would recommend is that both options be re-presented to city council or be presented to city council with the recommendation that the least change necessary is the 24, but that if city council decides that 23 is more desirable from the council's perspective, that zoning would be behind that approval as well. That's, to me, a policy decision. Certainly, there's a least, a less deviation alternative possible than the 23-foot one.
I'm inclined to just...
23-inch?
Yeah, 23-foot.
23-foot.
I'm inclined to approve the variance for FAR and, or to recommend approval of that and to recommend denial of the other one. I think at that point, city council can do whatever they want, but I do feel strongly that sometimes when it gets to be designed by committee, sometimes you forget about some other things out here, and it's a fresh set of eyes that perhaps brings that point up. And so I think sometimes that's what we can be. And in this case, I think it is, because I think that there's a, there's a valuable trade-off here that I would like to encourage city council to certainly address. So that's my inclination, is to recommend approval of the one and recommend denial of the other.
I agree with that, Mary Beth.
I would, I would lean toward, more toward that view than to recommending approval of the 23 on its own merit.
Okay. So with that...
Well, but are we not recommending approval of this project to city council?
Yeah, absolutely.
And so that we can put, we can recommend approval with the proviso that they consider? Because if we find that they have not met the standard, then we cannot recommend approval, if I understand correctly.
With respect to that variation.
We can break it up.
Yeah, a lot of times what we would do is vote on each of these variation requests separately.
Okay.
So that gives city council the most flexibility while letting them know what we happen to think.
But, but to be clear, and you've categorized sort of the FAR as one, and we also have the load, we also have the loading dock.
Oh, that's right. I forgot about the loading dock.
But there's also two different parking variations. One is the number of spaces.
Yes.
Which I think we're all in favor of approving.
I agree as well, because what they, and I apologize, but I didn't say this, but the requested variation, it actually increases, decreases the degree of nonconformity, and I think it's a major decrease in the degree of nonconformity. And so for that reason, I think that the number of parking spots is okay. I also think that the, believe that the loading dock, again, because this particular property has no need for a loading dock, there's no reason to hamstring it in the site planning and all of that stuff, to hamstring the project with that. So I believe that, that that is the least deviation necessary as well to eliminate that. So yeah, the only thing I'm not recommending would be the 23-foot wide, right?
It's not, I mean, it sounds to me like the only thing anyone on the board has a debate over is that particular variation request rather than any of the other three.
Right, which is why, which is why I think that we can recommend approval to the city council with the proviso that they take into consideration an expansion of the parking lane.
Get away in.
Another option is that you can recommend approval with the condition that the applicant shall work with staff prior to city council to determine if there is less deviation from the regulation needed.
Yeah, that's, that sounds...
Then it's out of our hands.
Well, we've identified that possibility tonight.
Yeah.
On the record. I don't know that we need to identify whether it could be done. It's a question of whether or not it...
Will be done.
Will be done or should be done at this point.
Or even looked at, yeah.
I'm going to let you guys come up with a motion.
Okay, I would move that we recommend approval of this project to the city council with the condition that they explore the possibility of expanding the width of the aisles, the parking aisles to 24 feet by modifying the amount of greenery on the perimeter of the playing fields. And that the project be done in substantial compliance with the materials you have provided today.
So the motion is that all four variations be approved with a condition that the parking lot aisle width variation be presented as an option?
Yeah.
I'm recommending that we...
That's not what four of us were leaning towards. You're going to end up with a not-good vote.
Okay, so, so... So you're saying that you would like the condition to be that city council not allow the 24 aisle, the 23-foot parking aisle? That is what you want us to recommend to city council?
I don't want to do anything.
Yes, as a recommend, yes, as a recommendation to city council. I, I would frame it as a motion, I would frame it first as a motion to approve the three variations that we all agree on. So I would make two motions, perhaps, the first motion being to...
Okay, well, Scott, why don't you make the motion? I defer.
Okay. I move that we recommend to city council to approve the major variations with respect to FAR, with respect to the number of parking spaces, and with respect to the request to have no loading docks.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Did all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? With a motion, with a vote of five to zero, that recommendation goes to city council.
Okay, now, here's where it gets a little confusing, because I know how much you like to have a positive motion of some sort. So should we be making the motion that Mary is saying and then voting it down, or should we be framing the motion in some other way?
Well, this is a different motion. This is a motion on one variance only.
Right.
So you would propose that we recommend approval as well of the variance to, with regard to the width of the parking lanes, and then everyone would vote on that, on that proposal?
Right, right.
Except me.
Right, presumably, right.
Right, okay.
So that's, that is the motion. Move that, move that we approve the fourth variation with respect to the aisle width for the parking.
I...
At 23 feet.
I would vote...
I need a second.
I second that.
It's removed and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
With a vote of four to one, you, that goes to city council with a recommendation for denial. Thank you very much, and good luck with your project. All right. Moving on. Freaks you out every time.
It doesn't freak me out. It's like a senseless way to do it.
It is. It's... We just have to maintain our positivity.
It's less, it's less clear of a communication.
They'll be all right.
Yeah, look, we're going to stay focused. We're still on the record. We're staying focused. The people on Central Street have been here for an hour, which is amazing. It's only been an hour. So, all right, 32, 33, 32, 49, Central. The floor is yours. Oops, sorry. Melissa needs to read it into the record. I got ahead of myself.
Highlands on Central LLC, property owner, applies for major zoning relief to construct a 14-unit multiple-family residence with a detached garage and open parking in the R4 General Residential District and the OCSC Central Street Overlay District. The applicant requests 14 dwelling units where a maximum 10 dwelling units are allowed, zoning code section 6854C, 55% building lot coverage where a maximum 40% is allowed, zoning code section 6856, and 62.1% impervious surface coverage where a maximum 55% is allowed, zoning code section 6859. The zoning board of appeals is the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record include variation application submitted December 27th, 2017, zoning analysis, renderings, site plan, landscape plan, floor plans, elevations, plat of survey, inclusionary housing application, public benefits summary, letter of support, image of property, aerial view of property, zoning map of property, DAPR draft meeting minutes excerpt of February 7th, 2018, as well as a, an emailed packet of letters of support and objection that was emailed out shortly before the meeting, and hard copies are available here, and one more email that followed up afterwards that was handed out.
Come on up. Tell us about your project, please.
Melissa, can you pop up our PowerPoint real quick?
Good evening, members of the zoning board of appeals. Thank you for allowing us to bring our proposal before you this evening, and we appreciate your consideration.
I'm sorry, did you say your name and address?
My name is Deanne Skirmorehorn.
Thank you.
We are the property presenters, owners. Our office is on Central Street at 2737 Central Street. And I just thought I'd tell you a little bit about how this project came to be. We have been involved with this project along with our partners, Evanson Bond and Mortgage. And about two years ago, we looked at this property and said we've reached the end of the useful life. Just to back up a second, Evanson Bond and Mortgage built these townhouses back in the 50s. Evanson Bond and Mortgage has been in Evans since 1889 and is now under the operation of the fourth generation of the Heiberg and Willis family, both of which have been part of the Evans community, both professionally and personally, for many, many years. Skirmore and Company was founded in Evanson in 1967, and we just celebrated our 50th year last year. My brother Bill and I are second generation and now running the business, and we look to continue to be a part of the Evans community for many years to come. So as we looked at the property that we have and the structures that we have on the property and realized that they had reached the end of their useful life, our first step was to look at what we could do to redevelop the property without any variance, basically by right. And we determined that we could build nine units, three to four bedrooms each, and reach a four, three stories in height. This design would use the maximum amount of zoning allowances without any request for variance, but we felt the massing would be too large for, based on what the property is, and, and that's why we're here proposing what we're proposing today. The units that we could build by right could easily be converted from rental to condominium and give us more options from a business standpoint. But again, while this might be the easiest, quickest, most profitable way to go, we didn't feel this was the best fit for the property, for the site, for Central Street, and for the neighborhood. So we set out to review other options. What we presented here is a proposal for a 14-unit building, two stories, seven units at grade, and seven units on the second floor. So single-level living. The seven units at grade would be handicap-adaptable, with all the doorways, hallways, turning radiuses, et cetera, that would meet the ADA requirements. The seven units on the second floor would also incorporate all of those same dimensions and be adaptable so that if, if someone were to live on the second floor, for example, and wanted to put a chairlift in the stairwell, we would have fully adaptable units on the second floor as well. But right now, there's no elevator proposed, just to make it clear. We are proposing a more traditional architectural look and finish as an alternative to the modern mid- and high-rise properties that are being built in Evanson currently. Our goal is to provide a single-family feel in a small neighborhood apartment building that keeps, you know, that neighborhood feel alive. So we spent the last 18 months working with the staff here at the city to refine our, refine our plans and incorporate their suggestions with regard to the design, materials, et cetera, so as to minimize the number of variances required, or requested, I should say. We also met with the neighbors last spring, showed them our initial plans, asked for their comments, and we were very favorably impressed with the response. Most of the responses were overwhelmingly positive. The most frequent questions had to do with off-street parking, stormwater management. And so we made sure that our plan met the requirement for parking off-street with 21 spaces, 16 of which will be garages, and five outside spaces. And our engineers have designed a huge underground storm water management retention system in addition to the bio-swales that are incorporated in the landscape plan. Now, we fully understand that a 14-unit building would require variances, as well as providing public benefits for the neighborhood, and we're happy to do all that. We met with the alderman to come up with some of the things that would be a benefit to the community, and alderman suffered and recommended that we install a flashing light at the crosswalk at the south end of the, I'm sorry, the east end of the property near Bent Park, and we're happy to do that. We also met with Public Works, and they suggested that we install a concrete landing pad for people getting off the bus while traveling west on Central Street, because there is not, no such landing pad now. And we are happy to include that in the project as well. In fact, at DAPR, there was a recommendation to include a bus shelter, but there's actually a bus shelter across the street on Central Street for people going east, which is really more of a loading point for that route, whereas going west is more of a getting-off spot. So a bus shelter is probably not as beneficial there as it is across the street, and that's probably why it's there right now. We also are very happy to be able to work with Lou Dixon and the Evanson Rebuilding Warehouse and their workforce training program. They are in the process of deconstructing the structures currently, and we will also be hiring one of the program trainees as a member of our construction staff for this project. I don't know of any other development in Evanson is making that commitment. We are happy to help out and give someone who's gotten the training through the program the ability to work on a construction project and develop their skills and hone their skills, and then have the marketability on their resume for future projects. We feel this project is a good fit for the site. It's in keeping with the architecture and style of surrounding properties. It provides an alternative to the larger-scale mid- and high-rise developments that are being built in other areas of Evanson, and it's an alternative to that modern architecture while giving residents the conveniences of new construction. With that, I'll turn it over to our architect to let her walk you through the actual project. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Eileen Choak, and I work with OKW Architects. And I'm going to quickly walk you through the project at the design. So as Dan had said, originally, the intent was to try to provide housing that would be better used for people with limited accessibility, seniors, younger folk, the whole kind of wide range. That created a, an issue with planning that you want as many units at grade. When we started to lay that out and plan, we were bumping up against the impervious count and the building coverage because of the footprints that we were trying to keep at grade. So we started to work into that system. How can we get as many of these units and as many of them as adaptable? Just to kind of bring you up to speed, our property is located in this section of the R4 zoning. Behind us is R1 and the park that crossed the street that we were discussing the sidewalks for. This is basically, just to kind of give you a quick update of the characteristic of the neighborhood property, a lot of it is one- and two-story with brick and siding, with a lot of gabled roofs. It's kind of a smaller scale. That was one of the other pieces we wanted to do, is make sure that our building felt like it belonged in that smaller scale and not do a larger, kind of massive townhome feel where you're living on all three floors. The intent was to try to keep all the living at grade and at one floor on the second level. This is just a quick view of the site to orient you with our project. Across the street is the park, and next to us is our neighbors. Across the street is the park, and next to us is our neighbors. There's a couple two-story and one-story buildings directly adjacent. To give you another quick orientation to our property and the existing property, our building is proposed in the red line, as well as the covered parking. Right now, there are no covered parking on the site, it is just all open concrete and pavers, and we are going to be honoring all of the setbacks. In fact, we are farther away from the property than the existing building in, and actually not to the zoning allowed requirements. This is just a quick view, these are the parkway trees that already exist. Our property has quite a large amount of heritage trees that are on the corners, which we plan to keep, as well as the parkway trees that informed us on how we wanted to handle the property, the situation of the building and the setbacks, and also the stormwater requirements. We knew that we were going over the impervious surface, and part of that calculation was due to the off-street parking. The requirement in the zoning for Evanston is that you have to take a square footage per parking, regardless of whether you're using impervious or pervious. So we decided, since our property was being designed with a larger footprint at grade, that we would do as much as we can above and beyond what was required to meet that, to counterbalance the impervious surface we have caused by roofs, and as well as the off-street parking. When you do the calculations, and the off-street parking is pervious pavers, we don't get to take credit for that in terms of the lot, and the pervious content. We do get credit for it when we do our stormwater calculations, but we've gone above and beyond what our stormwater calculations would require. This just shows you the building, in essence, with the trees removed that are existing, so you can get a better feel for the architecture, and how the space was laid out with trying to create variation. We worked with the city quite a lot on materiality, breaking up the massing, as well as the front and the back property. Quickly, to kind of go over the site and the impact on landscaping and building elements, the three trees that we are going to be removing are, in essence, on the edges of the property, or on the edge of the existing buildings themselves. We are keeping and maintaining all of the very large trees up at the front, and we made sure that when we were doing our stormwater management plan that Dan had mentioned, that we were making sure that we were not driving large pipe and storm up in the front to potentially have an adverse impact to those existing trees and topography. So we made sure that when we were planning, how we were going to be draining and handling that stormwater requirements, as well as trying to accentuate, due to our request for variance and impervious and lot coverage, to make sure that we were doing it in the best way that would affect the neighboring properties, and the least impact to the existing parkway trees and existing very large trees on our property. This is the site plan and the first-floor plan. As you can see, we have met all of our requirements in terms of, you know, setbacks, allowances, that really just came down to the variances requested, the two for impervious and lot, based on trying to get as many units as we can at grade, and then trying to limit the size of the units themselves, so that we could create as many units as possible for folks with that limited accessibility and mobility. The second floor is identical to the first floor, it is built with the same exact clearances, and this map kind of walks through what we say when we say Illinois or accessible requirements. We are not required by code to do this on these units, our building is too small, and we felt that this was a very important need in the community, specifically for seniors, people who are moving in Evanston and need a smaller platform to live, do not want to necessarily live downtown, do not want to necessarily live in an elevator building, still want to have that local residential feel. It also is very good housing for people with limited mobility as well. There is not very many houses that are built for this type of access, so we felt this was a great way to take care of that, to have everything at grade, and this allows a lot more people in this area to have housing at this level without having to live in more of the downtown neighborhood zone. So just quickly to show you, we've got the turning radiuses, as well as all the clearances required at doors and bathroom accessories. So this unit has quite larger bathrooms and setbacks that you would not see in a typical kind of unit of this size. That also increases the units themselves, their square footage, to allow for that to occur on the property. The units themselves are 1,274 square feet, which is still a nice size, it's not looking for a very large, oversized unit type. I believe the zoning would allow a 2,500-square-foot unit to be constructed on this site. The exterior materials, as you can see from our perspectives, as well as the elements here, we have a lot of variations between brick and siding, to break down the balance of the facade, to bring the scale down, as well as as it returns the property. The backside, we paid special attention to our neighbors from the north, what they would be seeing across their property as they looked over. The parking garage, you know, blocks your view of the building, as well as the neighbors' properties and their own trees and garages. So what we wanted to do was make sure that we did the most impact into the massing on the roof, as well as created large, different masonry pockets for entryways that create another breakdown in the facade, as you see from the driving parking area. For our landscape plan, what we've done is incorporated the request for our stormwater management. We have a large detention basin pipe that runs along the back of the property, that feeds and picks up all of the drainage that is coming off of this back area, and at the front, we've added bioswales to help the stormwater that is running off the roof be percolated within the property itself, as opposed to adding it to the stormwater system.
Is bioswale a fancy name for rain garden?
Yes.
Thanks.
Bioswale, a rain garden, a bioswale is a more engineered focus, and a rain garden is not necessarily having the drain below. And I'll show you in our engineering slide when I get to it. So a bioswale has a drainage system attached to the pipe, and a rain garden is letting it naturally percolate through the soil, so that you're collecting it in a zone of landscape that can handle the water and slowly diffuse it back into the ground. We felt that that was very appropriate for the large trees that we had up front, we did not want to over-flood them, we did not want to have large drainage connections up at the front that could potentially damage some of these larger trees that are off on this side of the property. But in the backside of the property, where a lot of our roofs from the garage and our parking were coming from, we wanted to be able to handle that quickly and meet the requirements for MWRD, as well as Evanston. And part of what we've done is created pervious pavers in this location, as well as all of the patios. We discussed with the city having some of the sidewalks be also pervious pavers. The problem there was, we're trying to deal with people with limited mobility as our goal, and one of the things that's hard for those folks is to deal with uneven paver applications when you're walking in and out. So we felt in the back, in terms of where you would be parking your car and coming on-site, that that could potentially cause a problem in the long run, and we wanted to make sure that we kept a very smooth, zero clearance tolerance at thresholds and sidewalks, and used the pervious pavers where they would have limited impact in terms of someone who's walking and using a walker or wheelchair, as well as kept the front walks with the concrete, as well as visiting folks and people who may not have a car who are using the property. One of the things that we did is we knew that we were over the pervious coverage. That was basically because of our roofs, as well as the onsite parking counting as a straight square footage calculation. So what we did is we decided we are going to use the pervious pavers, even though from a planning and requirement for MWR and the city and our calculations, we decided that we're asking for this variance, we're going to do as much as possible above and beyond to kind of counterbalance that, to counterbalance roofs. The best way is to have our stormwater management onsite and not flooding into the system or the neighbors. As of right now, the new MWRD requirements that have recently passed will require this property to have the stormwater detention, but we're going above and beyond by at least 22% besides their standards, as well as the city's requirements. But it does not count in terms of the zoning calculation for pervious materials, which we understand.
So, just to be clear, though, you didn't meet the requirement for impervious surface
Correct.
Without that?
No, we, it doesn't-
Even if, let's say, for example, you could take that as an exception, you weren't meeting-
Correct.
-impervious, you were still over.
We were still over, but whether we had permeable pavers or not, it would not affect how much we were over-
Right.
-because we cannot count that the onsite parking. So we understood that that was, that what we were doing wasn't going to decrease, but we felt that in the spirit of what we were asking for, we would try to put back as much as we can, that if you could count that we were doing pervious, I'm always saying impervious, pervious, pervious, that we were doing it on our own to kind of remediate what we were requesting, even though officially, it doesn't count for us. And it is not, in addition to create, just to clarify, it is not a requirement for MWRD or the city. We are providing 22% over our stormwater detention needs than what is required by code. We felt that it was important to try to do as much as we could to counterbalance what we were asking in our request. So in terms of the landscape architecture, in the back, you have a true bioswale with the drain and the ground cover that would be in that area, and in the front, it's more of a rain garden, so you get more of a traditional-looking, grasses, more shrubs and bushes that like to have their feet wet, and that can store the water, but there's not the piping that is connected to the bioswale. So the, and we're doing a little bit more than what we need from a calculation standpoint, so that we're trying to counterbalance our request for the impervious overage, as well as balancing the lot coverage requirement. Here's some images of some of the landscaping that we would be using in the property, adding some more decorative trees, shrubs, a lot of ground cover, to kind of balance in that rain garden effect. This is the civil engineering drawing that basically describes how we're going to be handling the stormwater management on the site. We wanted to try to create it where there was the least impact to the natural vegetation that already occurred, as well as to keep it away from our neighbors as much as possible. And in the front, we are taking advantage of the rain garden effect, as opposed to putting in more piping and coverage along the back. And just to kind of go into more detail about some of the public benefits, just to clarify, this is where our property sits. This is the existing bus stop, as it is now, there is just a sign, there is no loading zone or bus shelter. This is the location that now is a, it is not a stop sign, it is a crossing sign, and so these would now have the flashing lights, so that you can see it as you're traversing back and forth. A lot of the kids from school and drop-offs cross here daily, so we felt that was a very important piece to the property. And this is where the existing bus shelter is when you're going east. The end of this bus run is just right up over this corner, so a lot of folks who come here are, this is the drop-off zone, as opposed to the pickup zone. So originally, when we met, we felt that that was a great idea to put in the parking for the future. To get a little more detail about Evanston rebuild, I'm not sure if you're aware of the process, it's above and beyond just a standard green deconstruction. It takes quite a bit of time, they go in the inside, and a lot of the materials are taken out and reused. It's a very slow and long process, and because of the weather, they're only able to do it at certain times because they're trying to protect what they're taking down. So unlike a demolition project that would take two weeks to handle, it's a longer process, as well as the training that goes in with the folks who are doing the project are getting trained, and the Skirmerhorns will be using them during the life of the project, we approximate it's going to be 24 months. They will be onsite, working with the construction team for the entire process, so they're going to have a very valuable experience in the trades to hopefully move on and find more work in this area, or depending on how their projects go, they may end up being a permanent employee. Again, this is just back to our perspective, to talk a little bit more about our space. I think that is where we need to be to keep moving forward, if you have any questions.
Thank you, I'm sure there are lots of questions for you.
I have, just as a starting question, these are, these units are being developed for rental, correct, not for sale?
Correct.
Okay. And how, this might be a question for the owner, the goal of having accessible units is admirable, how are you going to market these units for that use?
Sorry, you'll have to come up. Because I just want to tack on to that, right, because fair housing, you can't discriminate, right?
Correct.
So how do you, how do you make, how does, how do all those first-floor units not go to healthy people, and we could have had able-bodied people, and we could have had pavers and less impervious surface, but now we've got concrete?
We're definitely going to include that aspect of the property in our marketing efforts to encourage the opportunity for those folks who may need, or may have limited mobility and desire a unit that would have that capability. But you're right, we can't say no to someone else in favor of that use, but we certainly will encourage that as we market the property, because we think that's a need that's underserved right now, that's served by large, high-rise buildings.
So although that's your goal, you can't say with any certainty that that's what will happen on these first-floor units?
No one can, no one can, right.
I have a question, is, by any chance, is this subsidized rent, some of the units, any of them?
The, we participate in the Cook County, Housing Authority of Cook County's Housing Choice voucher program.
Oh, you do, okay, so this is a part of-
So we have a number of properties throughout Evanston, and all the ones that meet the pricing guidelines from the Housing Authority are eligible for people who need housing assistance, absolutely.
So in the event of a senior or disabled person that qualified, would they be able to be at this development?
I don't know the limitations on, so the target price on these units is about $2,500 a month. I'd have to look at the Housing Authority's guidelines to see if they would qualify this property for it. If they do, we'd be happy to do it.
Okay.
Can I ask you, I didn't notice on the plan, I'm sorry, is there, are there utility closets, is heat and electricity separate per unit?
Yes, there are, in the plans, there is a furnace and hot water heater that would be part of the renters' purview, so they have control over their own-
Sure, and they pay their own gas and electric?
Correct.
And you would provide the water, so the water is common, gas and electric-
Correct, and the buildings will be sprinkled, so.
Do you know currently if CHA Housing or Cook County Section 8 vouchers will pay $2,500 for two bedrooms, I mean, today, $2,500 for a two-bedroom with heat and electricity not included?
The requirements, from my understanding, is by area, so we would have to present the project to the Housing Authority, and they would tell us what they, whether it would be allowable or not.
Okay. I saw on the packet that the city had strongly encouraged your group to include an affordable unit onsite, and that that recommendation was not taken, that you opted instead to contribute the $75,000 to the Affordable Housing Fund, is that correct?
That is correct. Given the size of the project, with the few number of units that we're doing, and with the cost of the stormwater management and all the other things that we're doing on the site, including the public benefits, there really isn't much economy of scale to spread those costs over. So the impact of the rent on the Affordable Housing Unit On-Site would basically put this project out of financing capabilities. For example, if the target rent is $2,500 a month, the Affordable Unit On-Site rent would net out to be about $800 a month. When they give you the two-bedroom number, it's, I think, $1,066, and then you subtract for the fact that the tenant pays their own electric, their own gas, their own stove, they accommodate for the cost of electricity for the refrigerator, and one other thing I can't think of, but when you net all of those things out, the rent comes down to about $800 a month. The cost to build this is right at the point of- The cost to build this is, is right at the point of go or no-go, and it's going to take every bit of income that the units produce in order to meet that, you know, financial viability of the project. So, we're more than happy to pay into the housing fund, and we're more than happy to continue to work with the Housing Authority of Cook County and all the properties that we own and manage. But for this property, it's just not economically feasible to offset that reduction in the, in the rent for that unit. So, we're more than willing to pay into the fund.
And, and just to clarify, after we had our DAPR meeting, we'd always been presenting that we would be paying into the inclusionary housing cost, and, and after it was presented in DAPR, the owners met with the department to find out exactly what would the ramifications be, what are the financial requirements? It wasn't taken as just a grain of salt. They immediately made a, a meeting to meet with-
We met with Sarah Flax and Savannah Clement, who went through the entire process. And actually, after meeting with them, we had assumed that the AMI requirement, I think, is 60%. So, average median income for the affordable housing unit in this location would be a 60% of what a, the average monthly income would be. So, we interpreted that to mean that the rent would then be 60% of the market rent. Thankfully, meeting with Sarah Flax and Savannah Clement, they educated us that that's not the case, because that would have been about a $1,500 a month rent. We could possibly have made that work. But when they showed us what the guidelines are for the program in terms of how the rent is calculated, it has nothing to do with the percentage of the market rate to the 60% AMI, it has to do with the guidelines that, again, I think at this time are set out by HUD, if I remember what she said, and that the rent for a two-bedroom unit in Evanston was $1,066 as your starting point, and then, as I said, you subtract from there. So, after meeting with them, you know, we, we just found it to be completely impossible to meet that requirement and still be able to put the project going forward. We'd, we'd like to offer these units, we think that this is a underserved product for the community, we think it's in keeping with the size and scale of what's in the neighborhood, and we'd like to be able to offer the, you know, limited, those who have limited mobility, the opportunity to have something other than a high-rise to live in. But unfortunately, with only 14 units, we don't have that economy of scale. You know, your stormwater management can't be spread over a 14-unit building. You know, your stormwater management doesn't change, no matter how tall you go, but yet, with only 14 units, those costs, you know, just are what they are. So, unfortunately, we don't have the ability to take on that additional burden as far as the viability of the project is concerned, so.
And why, just why is it there need to be 14 units?
We're trying to offer as many units at grade without the need for steps and for those who have mobility issues, and it just seemed that to do that would make most sense to make it so that the matching amount is on the second floor. I mean, the stairway could accommodate a chairlift if someone wanted to do that, so we could probably get to more than seven units that would have that capability. As I said, we haven't built that into the project, but certainly, if someone came along, and we happen to be as fortunate enough to have all the seven units on the first floor being used for those who have mobility issues, if someone said, "Hey, can I rent a second-floor unit?", it would be easy to do, as long as the city will allow us to put in a chairlift.
I was going to ask that question. How can you put a chairlift on a, on a, on an egress stair? Right? Your, two egress stairs are required. How can you possibly reduce the travel width?
Because we're only two stories with residential, the egress requirement is, you know, the bedroom windows, so in terms of amounts of egress, we have two egress from the-
Even in multifamily, they're letting you use a second, the windows as egress?
Uh, correct, when you look at IVC code. So, what we have is, we have two means of egress from the unit, and we have two stairs. You could work that out as one stair that is protected as a rating, so the second stair is not a means of egress, because of the travel distances that we are and the height for residential.
Plus, those chairs can be flipped up, and so they're no longer, you know, so if when a chair is sitting down, it might be, you know, 18 inches wide-
Yeah.
Up, it's eight inches wide.
Yeah, but you're only allowed to increase, you're only allowed to go into the space by three or six inches, generally by code. So, I'm just curious about that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we have two staircases per each landing, so there's two means of egress from the unit, and if that was a fire-rated access, then you would still have means to get to two exits on the other floor with one stair. I know it sounds a little odd, because when you're designing multifamily, but this is very similarly like a residential unit, that would be a row home, they are required to have a front and a back stair, and they can travel within as well. So, you can count your bedroom, in a single-family home, you can count your bedroom as the egress because of your level of floor. It does, as an architect, it does sound really strange when you start reading that section of the code. It has to do with your construction and how many units, et cetera, that you're falling within. I think one of the other things that came about when we tried to put as many units at grade, we were hitting the problem with impervious and lot coverage, always. If we took the units off on the second floor to try to fit within the 10, it seemed that we were still having the same impact. So, we felt for the success of the building, we're already taking the hit there, it'd be nice to have more available units and making them smaller. So, you have a two-bedroom 14-unit, as opposed to a 10-four-bedroom unit, that would be larger in scale, but that could still conform with the zoning requirements. I think that was the balance of what we were trying to achieve, is have as many of these single-floor living units, as opposed to stacking the units.
So, let's talk about that for a little bit. If you wanted to get these single-floor units, right, that's your desire as a developer for this piece of property, right?
Correct.
That's not a requirement by anything, that's nothing, and it's, quite honestly, you can't enforce it, right? Because of fair housing. So, why not do those as, as one-bedrooms? And then, you're not increasing, so you can still have your density that you're looking for, right? 14 units, but you're not going over lot coverage, and you're not going over building lot coverage, impervious surface or lot coverage?
It's totally an economics thing. I mean, you couldn't build the-
Okay, so it's just financially infeasible for you. It's not that you can't do it, it's that it doesn't work for you financially.
So, you're saying, just so I make sure we understand, 14 one-bedroom units, that would be smaller-
Yeah.
-with still the same amount at grade, but the one-
Right. It met your goal of how many you were looking for at grade.
Correct.
It met your goal for what you were looking for, for density for the lot. It also meets the goals of meeting lot coverage and building lot coverage.
Correct. I, I think the reason why we went to the two-bedroom, it's a very common request. A lot of some of the smaller apartment buildings that you can get are one-bedroom, it's a rare thing to find the two-bedroom that acts exactly like this. A lot of the people who are looking for this are couples or older seniors who want to stay in Evanston, but not relocate, not move downtown, still stay in a walkable location. So, we felt that the two-bedroom was that perfect mix of what would be the most beneficial all around, and again, would be the most marketable, so that this project, trying to combine these intents of having more of these units available versus what you could do as of right, so it was a balancing act of-
Right, but there, but there is a solution, right? That doesn't require a variance.
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
I'm, I'm having a little bit of a problem with the emphasis here on accessible units for seniors. I agree completely that, I think the project looks very nice, it's, I agree that it melds nicely in the neighborhood, and I think that there is definitely a demand for two-bedroom, two-bath apartments for both seniors and for young starter families in Evanston. The problem that I'm having is that the, the public benefit is this theoretical appeal to seniors to stay in Evanston, and that's not a, I'm, I just can't see that as a real benefit, because it's theoretical.
Well, we're not limiting it to seniors by any means.
I, I understand.
I mean, there are certainly people who are families that have-
Sure.
-mobility issues other than seniors, so we certainly would not limit it in that-
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. And, and so, but at the end of the day, it's just two-bedroom, two-bath, a 14-unit, two-bedroom, two-bath development, and it does have accommodations for that, and I, I applaud that, that's, that's wonderful. But, but I'm, the, the benefit that I'm seeing is just not in scale to what you're, what you're asking for. And, and, you know, the city, it seems to me, from the packet, gave you options that would, that they felt would meet that exchange of benefit to allowances, and you rejected that. So, you know, that's, that's where I'm having the problem with, with this, because it's, you're, it seems to me that you don't, you could have done a property that was within the variances, that was within code, with a mix of maybe two or three bedrooms, and then, then smaller two-bedrooms, that would not have required the, the variances that you're seeking here.
I think one of the, the pieces, when we were looking at it in terms of the adaptable and flexible, is that, one of the things that fair housing is requesting that this unit does not have to comply with, is trying to create more buildings in the future for moving forward, so that you're building these buildings, so that, moving forward, you're providing more options as the life of the building progresses. So, trying to balance, and I know it sounds like a very small public benefit, that's why we were put the city on multiple issues, to try to create the most public benefit besides that portion, it's just one of our public benefits. And originally, the inclusionary housing piece was not necessarily something we felt that onsite versus not would be looked, we know, we were told that that is considered a public benefit, when the ordinance just says you can do one or the other. So, for us, it was a little confusing whether that would be required until we got in front of DAPR on that front. But I think the idea here with the housing is to create that stock of housing for the future. These are folks who are building the property, that they're going to own the property, and it hopefully will be here for another 75 years. And so, we're building the housing now, that the needs are requiring, the needs for this type of housing are only growing, and therefore, even if we can't say who is going to rent and lease these spaces, the ability for someone to use it is already built in within the space, and that starts to create the-
But isn't building those, those units as AD accessible? Which is only marginally more expensive, right? What's the difference between a 28 door and a 30 door? From a cost perspective, not very much. So, but that benefit is really to you, because it allows your building to continue to meet the needs of whatever the market bears in the future. It's really more, as the way I see it, it's more of a benefit to you than it is to the community, because it keeps your product viable longer without having to renovate.
So, if we didn't build to the clearances and the allowances for the mobility impaired, we probably could have shrunk the size of the building.
Yeah, I, I think in terms of our costs, when we were looking at it, it's not just the size of the doors, it's the size of the required turning radius and use for the building. So, there's a lot of square footage that's in the hallways and the doors and the entrances that if we did not need to comply with that, would be a lot smaller.
Probably wouldn't need this.
Size of the bathroom is quite large, if when you look at it, the plumbing fixtures, the at-grade, the detailing at the foundation wall for water and storm, to create that accessible use, does have a inherent lit, small amount of money. And I know in our breakdown, it was a very small amount that we were saying this would be affected by. Definitely, the building could be smaller if those requirements and clearances were not needed to be met, which they aren't as of right. And, and there is a benefit to them that they're doing this. I think the realistic possibility here is, a lot of times, the wanting more units is specifically because they want more income. I know as of right, they could probably build something without all of the time and effort to do this, and all the time and effort to provide other inclusionary housing, and bus shelters, et cetera, and handicap housing, and probably would be, from a business standpoint, more economical than what we're proposing here. And I think that's where we were coming at this from, is that we felt this was better for Evanston, and that we were doing our best to try to balance the variances that we were requesting, so that the impact to the neighbors and the environment and the stormwater would be mitigated by what we were doing. But you're right, we could build a smaller unit and a smaller footprint, but at the end of the-
We're also just double-checking the math, and you can just build 10 of these two-bedroom units, which you're allowed to do by right, and you're under building lot coverage and you're under impervious surface. So, then we're not talking about anything, and you guys can go on your merry way and get a permit tomorrow.
That's true.
Right?
That's true. And, and so-
Who wants to come here when you can get a permit tomorrow?
As I said at the beginning, that's exactly what would have been the easiest way to go, probably been the least financial impact on us. But we manage a lot of real estate in Evanston, between ourselves and our partner, and this product isn't there, except for in a high-rise building.
Yeah, but we're saying it's the same product, it's just the quantity.
Yeah, I think, I think the point that they could do without coming in front of you is to do as of right, four-bedroom units, nine of them, and they would be making more-
No, you can get 10 units.
Correct.
10 two-bedroom units.
Right, we could, we could.
Could.
But, but-
As of right.
But we-
Could.
Again, we're trying to maximize the number at grade, so that we had the maximum number available to those who have mobility impairments, and because-
So, that's a choice you're making.
That's a choice that we're making, to try to serve the community in a way that they're not being served.
And I think as of right, they could do nine or 10 four-bedroom units, that would be much larger in mass and shape in the neighborhood, and would provide more income than what they're requesting in the 14 smaller bedrooms that are accessible. I think that's the balance that when we came in, understanding what they could do as of right.
I think you'd have a harder time renting a four-bedroom.
I think there are, in the neighborhood, just across the street, there are some of these larger buildings that they're done there, they could also sell them as condos, and then they're walk away, and they're gone, and-
Right.
And they're not part of the community. So, I think that's where they were coming from, in terms of the 14 versus the, they were trying to balance what they could do and what they thought might be better overall for the community, and that's where the difference in the price, that's where the difference is. So, the 14 made that a viable project versus going and just doing the standard four-bedroom, three-story, parking underneath, kind of standard, larger massing-
So, then the, the suggestion is that you could not do a project within the confines of the zoning codes that would be financially viable, and that would also provide rental housing for starter families and people with mobility issues. That's just not economically viable in any way on this parcel of land.
Not, not for the number of units by right, unfortunately, because to maximize the amount of units for those with mobility issues, if we're going to a three-story, you know, building, now we've got to build in elevators and the costs associated with that. So, to, in order to continue to provide that, what we see is, is a underserved part of the community, we would have to incur significant additional expenses.
Well, how about incrementalism? I mean, that you shrink the footprint of the building, and you make a portion of it three-story and a portion of it two-story, and you have five units at grade level that provide these benefits, and then you have a second floor, and you have a third floor and half of it. So, you can get your units in, but you, you know, only, some of them are handicap accessible, not all of them. Because as we know, even with 14, with the potential to accommodate handicap accessible needs, probably 14 of them will not be leased to people who have those needs. So, it, it seems as though there could be a combination of unit sizes that would achieve your goal, but would also allow the project to be feasible.
I know that we studied early on, trying to work within the nine, 10 inclusionary, trying to create as many at-grade, and then split and have other, sorry, other larger units adjacent. The hard part was the way the stairs and the egress worked, with someone having to live up and then having the stairs within. When we started to lay the building out, even have one section of it be one-story and the other be two, and then, like you had mentioned, a third, we started grading more costs as we went up than what we've, we were losing a lot of the units that were single-floor living, because even though we have seven at-grade, the concept was, as well as people living on that floor, that they're not having to go, so there's seven completely accessible units, and the others up above, for someone who goes and has knee surgery and can't get around, everything is on one floor. So, we were trying to balance the pros and cons when we kind of first met and started talking with the city staff about, you know, is this something that could be, that we could do, that we could viably get, you know, approved? So, we did a lot of strategies in that way, and the way the numbers and the cost came down, this kind of was the sweet spot, and we felt it was kind of in keeping with the, the spirit of what we were doing in terms of density of people versus density of building. But, you know, your, your point is well-taken. We did a lot, I, I think we've been meeting since, it's been about 18 months, that we've been going back and forth, trying to fine-tune what we wanted to do and what we were attempting to do.
Can you explain how further the, on the inclusionary housing ordinance, why that's not financially viable for you to make one of the units? I know you said it would decrease your rent from $2,500 to $800 for that unit-
Right.
But you're, then, the, the flip side is a $75,000 payment, right?
Right, so the difference, to, to give you an idea of the difference between the two, you're looking at about a $500,000 cost compared to- two, you're looking at about a $500,000 cost compared to a $75,000 cost. So the effect of that rent over the period of time that it would be under that inclusionary housing ordinance, it would have about a $500,000 impact on the project.
How long is that?
25 years.
So you're, so the calculus for you is the amount of rent you're going to earn over 25 years versus a $75,000 payment today?
What it really comes down to is, by the time you build a project and then go out and try to get financing to take out the construction loan, you have to be able to provide a rent roll that the bank would accept. And basically, we're right at the margin with all 14 of them being at market.
You're not renting it for a 25-year period, right? Your rent roll is not, I've got it accounted for for 25 years.
No, I'm saying the rent roll in year one, at fully rented-
Yeah.
Is just marginally able to meet the requirements for a permanent loan. So any reduction in that-
A construction loan?
No, 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 the permit loan.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Yeah. It's a permit loan that you ultimately need to take out the construction loan.
Any other questions from anybody? Nope. Okay.
Thank you.
We're gonna let you guys have a seat.
Okay.
We're gonna let the neighbors speak. Neighbors, if you'd like to conclude this tonight, can we have you guys wrap up by 9:30? So I'm gonna, I did this haphazardly last time, so I'm gonna go down the list now of the sheet. So we're gonna go with Kathy Leoni. If you can give us your address, please.
3253 Central Street. I'm the, my husband is also here with me. We're the property, the first property just west of the, of the Highlands on Central. I'm gonna read something that I believe Scott may have gotten a copy of, I believe.
Just for, for the sake of brevity.
Yes, I'm sorry. We did, it'll be relatively-
No, no, if you've emailed it to us, we've actually read it.
Okay.
Believe, we read everything.
I believe it, I believe it. But I, let me just do a quick summary.
Feel free to highlight.
I'm not gonna read this whole document. I just wanna do a couple-
That's what I was afraid of.
No, no, I promise I will not do that for everybody's sake. So Shermerhorn and Company, under the entity of Highlands on Central, plans to demolish nine existing single townhouses and propose to replace it with 14. Obviously, we've gone over that a lot. However, they are seeking major zoning variances to construct these 14 units. Variations are generally granted in cases of some kind of hardship or unusual difficulty. However, the developer in their zoning variance application for major variance has not identified any hardships at all. I am, I am writing to lodge my objection to the variations requested in connection with this project and request that the variances be denied. The reason is simple, the developer has not demonstrated any hardship in connection with this project other than self-imposed difficulty stemming from attempting to meet their own programmatic requirements. Just a, one last comment, and I, and that is, I just wanna point out that I know that some people might say, oh, a flashing stop sign at the crosswalk might be helpful, or the city. But my feeling is, if the city needed that, or if we had needed that, the traffic engineers would have identified it as being important and maybe would have done something about it. Maybe there is an issue, I don't know. I live, obviously, I live right there, but we have the existing flag system, and it's not perfect, but I don't know, I don't see that that would be the, the work of a private developer to deal with. It seems like that should fall under the purview of the city, and the same applies to a bus pad or shelter. So I just wanted to mention, I guess, I, once I learned that, I guess I never understood that we had, had an option to kind of fight this, that there, originally it was zoned for 10. I was unaware of that. There were nine small units there. It's zoned for 10. To build 14, when I first heard that, I was like, wow, well, I guess that's gonna, I didn't know there was an option to fight that. And once I found out there were good reasons not to build a 14 unit, and we are specifically invested because we live right next door. Just on a personal note, when I looked at the plans and I see four air conditioning units that are right next to my backyard, that kind of hurts my soul when I think about sitting in my backyard. So I recognize that it's beyond the city's ability to deal with. I appreciate that there are good things about the, the development that Shermerhorn is trying to do, but I also wanted to mention that I did walk around, I found this out very briefly, quickly, yes, on Sunday I found out about this. So I walked around the neighborhood and talked to the different people just on the block that, on Hartzell, the people faced the, whose alley butted up against this, and all around the block on Central Street who were impacted by this. And I got the signatures of about 10 people. So I would have had more signatures, I'm confident, if I would have had more time. So that's, that's my piece.
Great, thank you very much.
Does any, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Doug Hood. And can you give me your address, please?
I'm at 3232 Hartzell Street, directly across the alley from the project, proposed project. And in fact, my house was one of the ones in their picture, so. So there's a, there's a couple of things. I've been trying to figure out what's been going on at this location since they cut down three or four heritage trees 18 months ago. I came over to the city, I spent time with the zoning department, they're like, we don't have any permits, nobody's applied for anything. So there's all this fluff about what they're doing for the neighborhood, but they prepped, they prepped the property to, to let you believe that they're doing this preservation work and they're taking care of the neighbors and all this. But, you know, that was, that was after they came in and cut down gorgeous heritage trees that were already there, because they were gonna be in the way of this parking, the parking garage that they wanted to put up. Additionally, I've been at my house for 25 years. I've been a part of three different positions to get the alley paved, and Evanston Bond and Mortgage has been the thorn in everyone's side. So this nonsense about, you know, being a good neighbor, they, they've been absolutely refusing to participate in getting the alley paved for those of us who have garages that, that back up on the alley, because they don't want the, the tax levy. So although we can get all the private owners to sign, you know, to get the, to get the alley paved, Evanston Bond and Mortgage has said, no, we don't, you know, we don't wanna, we don't wanna deal with it, and, and we're gonna block it. So I don't buy the good neighbor business that's being sold up here. And, and that, the, the, the parking garage that's being proposed actually is directly across from how I would back in and out of my, my garage. So it, you know, it adds to the, it adds to the, the challenge and inconvenience of an already narrow alley, you know, in terms of, you know, I've, I've got people from the, from the, from the house that's just to the, to the east of theirs, backing out of their garage and, and hitting my garage as it is. So adding all, adding the additional traffic, adding the garage, creating the, creating the sightline problems, adding the density that's not necessary. I mean, there's, every hardship that's been listed, as you all have pointed out, is a self-created one, and I see absolutely no reason to grant it. So thank you.
Thank you. Martin something. Sorry.
Zarofsky, yeah.
Zarofsky.
I live at 3242, so it's across-
3242 Central or Hartzell?
Yes, so it's across the street, basically.
Okay.
So I'm just quick, I'm just gonna say that we are a residential neighborhood, and lots of single-family homes or small buildings, units, like two, four units, basically buildings, no 10, 14 units. And, and this would be the biggest building in our area. It's massive, basically, just looking at the picture, it's massive, because everything, it's tiny where we live. What else? And the construction, they're proposing 24 months, that's kind of long for a small building, building like this. And, and that would mean all these construction trucks and noise for us for two years, basically. So I'm opposed to the size of this building. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim McCollum? And I see you're on Cowper, but what address?
2550, right on the corner of Central and Cowper.
2550.
Right.
Great, thank you.
Right, right across from Bent Park. I have several questions about this project. One is, I've lived across the street from it for five years, and I've seen what the Skirmerhorn Realty Company has done to not take care of property. And the buildings are still there, and if you want to see how they take care of property, go look at it. Go look at the roofs. Go look at what people lived in during, during the time that they were there, before they vacated them, not all that many months ago. I wouldn't be surprised if there were leaks in a roof, as terrible as the roof looks. That's one thing. The other is, the people that have been in the buildings before, now maybe it'd be a whole different category of people, I don't know, but they've averaged two cars per unit. And where those cars go in the wintertime, when they have to get off of Central Street, is in front of my house. So I can't park on the street. I can't shovel on the street. And I have a wife with rheumatoid arthritis who needs to have handicap accessible that way, you know, for her health. And I, I do a daily battle with that in the wintertime, trying to grab a time when I can clean an area that we can park in front of the house, only to have somebody from over there come and fill it again. And there, there was one particular tenant, for two or three years, who stayed, who would park their car there when it would snow, and it would sit there sometimes for 10 days and not be moved. So it couldn't be plowed in front of my house. But it was plowed in front of my house, and it piled up snow like this around it. So that was impossible to use the front of our house for access. Now, I can't hold, I can't hold Skirmerhorn and them accountable for people parking there, but I'm not at all certain that people are gonna not have more than two cars there. If there's two bedrooms and they have a kid, they may have three cars there. Or they may double up. People double up sometimes, at least they have. So people density, car density, right now, we've had nine. So if you have two or three people there, right now with nine, you're somewhere around 18 with two people. If you have 14, you're at 28 minimum, I would think, people. They're gonna have cars, and there's gonna be people. It is a big building. Martin is right about that. It's a very wide building. I guess those are the things I mostly wanted to say. I, I think they should be kept within the zoning requirement, is what I'm saying. And that's what I'd like to see you do. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Michael, yeah, that.
Hi, thank you. Just a couple of things I'd like to say. I'm at 3225. I represent Central Street Townhouse Association. We have eight units. I contacted all my unit owners. We're all basically, from what I understand, worried about the water retention. I'm quite impressed with their 22% additional water retention requirements. I don't know if that's by code or whatever, but I think it mitigates most of my complaints against this project. I liked the project when I first looked at it over the summer, when they invited everybody along Hartzell and Central Street to come look at it. Anybody who didn't know about it, who's been there 25 years, I don't know why. I also like to mention that about 10 years ago, I approached all the neighbors, went door-to-door and left notes, saying I'd like to get the alley paved. I got one response from Hartzell and three from my side of the street. So I don't know where people are. I'd love to get the alley paved. I've talked to the city about it a couple of times. The cost has only gone up. But nobody responded. I'd still like to see the alley paved. I didn't have a response from anybody from Shermerhorn's properties at all, or the bank people, but I didn't get a response from a lot of people who lived there. So getting the alley paved would be nice, and that would be a definite community benefit that maybe you should take into consideration. Basically, from what I understand tonight, they can have more on that property than they're asking for with these 14 units, right?
No.
Not higher up and whatnot?
No, by right, they're allowed 10 units.
Oh, just 10 units?
Yes.
Okay. I, I didn't understand that totally. Okay, so that means they'd have to loop off from what they have now, two units from each, each side, the first floor and the second floor. They can't have anything massive or more than what they have now. Okay.
In terms of footprint?
In terms of-
They could build, they could build higher than they're proposing.
Right, under the code.
Right.
So it would be, to me, a more massive project with more cars and all the other negativeness to it.
They could build higher than they're proposing. They couldn't, they couldn't build a larger footprint than they're proposing because the footprint causes them coverage issues.
Right.
And they could go up, but they couldn't exceed 10 units.
But the densities, yeah, the densities, not at 10 units without a variance.
Okay.
Thank you. Steve Lushloch?
Okay, I'm Kathy Leoni's husband.
Okay, are you good?
I thought you did a good job. I've never seen more than that.
My favorite answer of the night.
I just have one question. I just wanted to make sure.
Sure.
Did you get a copy?
We did.
Thank you.
We, we got a hard copy and it was sent to us by email.
I think four different times.
So thank you.
All right, Pete Gruper, Gruper?
Yes, hello, I'm Pete. I live at 2601 Prospect, which is one house the other side of Steve and Kathy, and I echo, Kathy did a great job. I just thought I would come up here and say, I, I've lived there 30 years, and, you know, when I first heard about this project, it was about a year ago, and I wasn't very happy, just because this neighborhood we have, this place is a very special place. It's, it's, you know, it's kind of, it's, it's small, it's quiet, it's, it's old-fashioned, I guess you might say. A lot of houses are from the 50s. Mine's a two-bedroom ranch, you know, houses that are less than 500K, you know, affordable, well, somewhat affordable anyway. And, you know, my feeling was that I, I don't, I didn't really like the idea of, of this big building going in, but I said, well, you know, it's, it's happening everywhere else. You see it, you know, all this development, and I guess it's come to my neighborhood. And then, it was only about, in fact, it was when you guys sent me the postcard, and I said, wow, you know, this is, this is, they're building way bigger than they were supposed to. I mean, there's building codes out there and, and zoning requirements for a reason, to, to try to help us maintain what we've got there. And I'm just concerned that, that we're gonna be losing that with, with this really huge building and, and stuff. And, you know, me personally, I think I would be affected by the traffic, the parking. The alley is really bad. I mean, really bad. In the winter, I have trouble getting into my garage because it's just a slush pile, and, and it, it needs to be paved. That, that, for sure, is, is true. And I guess, you know, that, that's, that's pretty much it, I guess. It just seems to me that, you know, we could, you know, maybe think that 40% increase in density, 10%, or 15% in, in loss of area, that's a lot. And I don't know. I, I'd like to see it stay within the, the standards myself, so that's all I can say.
Thank you. Joan Skirmerhorn, we've got you on the list. You don't want to? Okay, perfect. Lou Dixon, did you want to speak?
Hi, my name is Lou Dixon. I'm the Director of the Workforce Training Program for Evanston Rebuilding Warehouse, and-
Your address, please.
My, my home address or my work address?
Yeah, your home.
Home address, 2730 Prairie.
Thank you.
So I was delighted when the Skirmerhorns came to me last year and said that they wanted to deconstruct this, that they wanted to be, keep the materials out of the landfill. We obviously well more than comply with the debris diversion ordinance of Cook County. And it also, by doing it this way, it doesn't have the impact on the neighborhood that it would, the surrounding neighbors, when you take, when you use big machines, it pulverizes lead and sends it all over. This way, we're taking it down by hand with some help with some machines, but the, it is a workforce training program. So the, it's teaching, getting people that have various barriers, the, to a position where they can ultimately get a living wage job. And the Skirmerhorns have offered a job to one of our trainees. So it's been a wonderful project, and I'm grateful to have been there. So thank you. So thank you.
Thank you. Dale Bradley?
Hi, good evening. I'm Dale Bradley. I own the building at 3003, 4 Central Street. That's Bradley Investment Center and Flader Plumbing. I wear several hats in the city of Evanston. I'm only wearing mine as a building owner. And for 24 years, my office was directly across from Skirmerhorn's. And I remember when they built up, they put, was it four condos? They built four condos up above their building, right across from my office. And they're beautiful. They really added to the streetscape of Evanston. And when I saw this, and I see that, I don't see that as a particularly ominous-looking building. I think in the very same neighborhood that you spoke of, there are. We've watched them spring up. They're three stories, they're huge condominium buildings on the very same street. This, to me, looks a lot nicer. It's two stories, not three. And to get 10 units in, I think they'd have to go up three stories, right? Which I think would look a lot different, having this huge three-story condominium building across from the neighbors, than this beautiful two-story apartment building. So, at least in my opinion, and I've known this family for 28 years, I think that it'll be beautiful. I think it'll be very nice. And I think it meets both requirements, or maybe all seven, because, I don't exactly know how to say this, because I've driven down that street for 28 years. My old office was at 2740 Central Street, and given that one of the neighbors directly to the west is here, I've always found that particular stretch not very pretty. And I always, I always kind of hoped that someone would develop it. So I may be in the minority, but I think it looks beautiful, and I hope you'll approve it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynn Foster? Foster?
Hi, Lynn Foster, 3231 Central Street. I first met the Skirmerhorns, gosh, it's probably about 10, over 10 years ago. I actually lived at 2951 Central Street, which is a three-story condo building, and the Skirmerhorns took over the management of that company and they, my condo building. And they did an excellent job. They were very responsive and very responsible in their management style. I think that the property, now that I live at 3231, the property just to the west of me, when I had some concerns about it, Bill responded right away and said that, and shared the plans, and explained why they were not making further investment in the property. That was reasonable to me. He, also the tenants in that area, there was a garbage issue at one point, clutter. I contacted the Skirmerhorns, and they responded right away. I've looked at the plans, and I think they definitely represent progress in the neighborhood, and I'm supportive of it, of the project.
Great, thank you very much.
And you also mentioned that there was emails that you received supporting the project, but you didn't speak of those. How is the balance between what we've heard tonight and the support?
The balance is certainly more against than for.
Okay. Okay. Now, just last item. I, to the gentleman at 3232 Hartzell, I don't believe I've ever hit your garage.
All right. Judith Johnson?
Hi, I live at 3246 Hartzell, so my alley is right behind them. And I'm sure it's, you know, gonna be a nice project, and I appreciate the fact that they're doing what they can to reuse and be responsible doing it. I just feel like the zoning rules are there for a reason. Someone has looked at the density, what should be there, why it is the way it is. And I feel like we should follow that. I mean, increased density in the alley is gonna have an impact on my life. It's not just driving by and looking at them and thinking they look good. I just think that we should stay within the zoning rules that are there.
Thank you. John Crossen?
I live at 3246 Hartzell also, and I'll be brief. I would just echo most of the sentiments that my neighbors have said. I just feel that the variance they're asking for is quite large, in my opinion, a 40% increase, when there are, as you all mentioned, viable options to do things within the current regulations that are out there, that either they can't figure out to make viable for them, so that we're supposed to take on that variance. I'm not sure why that falls upon us, as the neighborhood people, who seem to be, in general, kind of against it. So, and there will be an impact, and the buildings are nice, and I'm sure the family is nice, but that doesn't really affect these variances. And I feel like the give back to the community, you know, as far as I know, yeah, a new bus stop, that's not, we haven't had problems with the old bus stop. There is a nice crosswalk there. Sure, it can be improved, but it's an okay crosswalk. They seem like such petty little things that don't necessarily even need improvement, to ask for huge gains, in my opinion, in the variances. It just seems so out of balance. I can't quite, I can't regulate it in my head, so I suppose that's pretty much what I would like to say.
Thank you. Janet Lee?
I, my name is Janet. I live at 3244 Central Street. This is just directly across. I just, thank you for everybody coming here and just to share ideas before a big decision is made. I echo a lot of my neighbor's sentiments, concerns about parking, concerns about the size of the building, same as, my concerns are the same as my neighbors. I just don't understand that 40, the 40% increase in density seems unnecessary. They've had chances to add, to amend and to change their plans. It seems like staying within the 10, a 10-unit and having both floors accessible to disabled persons seems, maybe putting in an elevator instead of having additional units and having all the units be available for people with mobility issues, I think seems, maybe it's not financially in their favor, but it seems more friendly to the community, if that's really what they're going for. I think that would be maybe a good option as well. I'm concerned about the construction time, two years. My neighbors on Hartzell are very humble. They didn't tell, they didn't mention that they work, I think this is important, they work overnight, and they have a very important job. I think getting a good night's rest is really important. They work, they get the rest during the day, and that is when the construction is gonna happen. So if that construction time is anywhere, if there's any wiggle room to make that shorter, I think that's something important to consider as well for noise. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And Daniel Troy. Did he leave? He left. All right, so you were the finale. Okay, is there anybody we missed? Anybody who didn't sign up? Okay. Skirmerhorn, it's now your chance to answer those questions, if you choose.
Very quickly.
Sure, we appreciate that.
Just very quickly, I'll speak on a few things. In terms of the trees, the trees have always been there. The survey we have is from two years ago. There's been no movement of trees. The trees have not been torn down. A demolition permit has been requested to do the rebuild, and if there were trees that were removed that are quote-unquote heritage, we would have gone through the appropriate channels, just to clarify that. In terms of the construction time, I think there's a confusion. It's how long we're going to have this person on the task force. When we say the project, that not necessarily when construction is occurring. A construction project has a lot of front-end permits, drawings, bidding, negotiating, then the actual building, then the finishing, closing, punch list. So for the neighbors, the concern is not 24 months of full-on bore construction, just to clarify that part of the piece of the puzzle.
Well, the construction, you want to know how much the time's gonna be a noise impact is really what the question is. And I understand that. And if you've lived near a single-family home construction, it would be similar to that. As you see the structure going up, that's where you're gonna be, the hammering and the, putting up the roof and that kind of thing. But once they get it enclosed, now they're working inside, you're not gonna really have that impact anymore. So, three, four months of what you would probably call noise would be probably realistic. Yeah. Actually...
All right, yeah. This is their time to respond.
The alley is something that I neglected to talk about. When we met the folks and invited them to meet us at the property and showed them our initial plans, there was a lot of discussion about the paving of the alley. And we said from the very beginning, and I'll save here on the record, we are more than happy to participate in the paving of the alley. We've talked to the city about it. Unfortunately, there's a significant backlog in the paving allotment. I'm sure Scott and Melissa can confirm that. But we'll say it here, we've said it to everybody we've talked to. You can count us in on our frontage saying yes to paving that alley, so that there's no misunderstanding there. We agree 100% that that alley is way beyond the time that it should have been paved, but unfortunately, the constraints, and I've got about four or five other properties that are in the same boat. The alleys are just, we're grading them, but they're grading not much gravel anymore. So as far as the alley is concerned, we couldn't agree more. We're more than willing to participate, and whenever that time comes, count us in, and we'll be a yes on voting for that petition to have that done. As far as the impact on the neighborhood, as far as parking and what current tenants have been doing, et cetera, unfortunately, I can't control what they do, but we do believe that we're providing as much onsite parking as we possibly can to minimize that impact. And that's why we've gone, and that's a requirement. I'm not doing anything that's not required. I'm not altruistic in that regard. We're meeting the requirement by providing 21 spaces offsite. As far as the condition of the property, we knew the property was beyond a useful life. There was no, it was a conscious decision. In fact, before we met with anybody else, more than two years ago, we met with the tenants and told them exactly what was gonna happen. And we gave them the choice. They went on month-to-month leases from that point forward. They could stay as long as they want until we started tearing down. And one by one, when there was time for them to do it, they made the choice to move. But we didn't hold anybody to any leases. We gave them full disclosure of what we were doing, and there was no mistaking the fact that that property is ready to come down, and has been for a while. And it will come down regardless of what happens here tonight. So from that standpoint, that isn't going to change. We're gonna continue on the process of deconstruction through Evanston Rebuilding Warehouse and continue that process. Our objective here was not to create a three-story massive building, try to do something that was more in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, and that's where we came up with this project. We manage a lot of real estate in Evanston, and we know how little housing is available to those who have handicap issues. The gentleman mentioned rheumatoid arthritis. Unfortunately, both my brother Bill and I both suffer from the same thing, and maybe we're thinking of the future for ourselves, I'm not sure. But we deal with that every day and understand completely what the concerns are. And that's part of what we're trying to do, is offer this alternative to high-rise living by creating as many units as grade, and that's the whole objective of what we're trying to do. You're right. By right, we could just go build nine, three stories tall. The neighbors would be more upset with us with regard to the massing of the project. And that's really not our objective. Our objective is to be good neighbors, and so that's my response. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, with that, we will close the record. And thoughts from the board?
I would first like to say that there's an awful lot to like about this project. It's attractive. I think that keeping it to scale at two stories and using materials that are reflective of, you know, Evanston neighborhoods is laudable. I think it's wonderful that you have used the very capable folks at Rebuilding Warehouse to do your deconstruction and to provide opportunities for young Evanstonians to learn something about those trades. I think that you've tried to reach out to neighbors, and I appreciate that. Unfortunately, I think that there is not adequate quid pro quo, if you will, to allow for the variances that you are requesting. I would love to see maybe greater outreach to the neighbors. Something is going to be built at that site, and there's going to be construction for a period of time at that site. The fact that you do have a good neighbor and somebody who's been in Evanston, who is willing to take this project on now, you know, maybe there can be a little more give and take, so that there, now you know that they will cooperate with getting the alley paved. Now you know that there are a lot of inroads, so that there can be a dialogue, and maybe there can be some greater accommodation for variances that allow you to put on the table an economically feasible project that achieves many of your goals, if not the full scope of what you've presented here. But I wouldn't be able to, I wouldn't be able to vote for this project because I think it goes beyond what is acceptable under the zoning ordinances vis-à-vis the public benefit, so that would be my position.
That was really well said, and a lot of the things I was thinking, so I won't repeat them all. It really is a lovely-looking project, and I really love the spirit with which you've created it. But I also think the, while you are trying desperately to preserve a look in the community, that the density you're proposing for this property and the other overages that come along with that, for impervious space, for lot coverage, really are a big burden. And you've heard your neighbors speak about their perceived burden on them tonight. And I am struggling under the zoning ordinance to understand what the hardship that's unique to this property is, that keeps you from being able to comply with the letter of the zoning ordinance, and I don't think there, I don't think there is one. And to the point you've made, and that other people in the room have made, you could build a compliant property that meets your economic needs, and certainly it would not make the neighbors happy. And that may end up being the reality for this property, but hopefully for the reasons my colleague said it doesn't need to be. I think it will require some more work on your part to think through what's feasible, but I also don't think I can support this project as it's been proposed.
I also think that this is a good project. It looks like a beautiful building. However, I have to side with the neighbors on this. I feel like the variance for the extra units, I could not vote for that. I feel like we should go along with what our current code says, and I feel like it can be developed in a way that would benefit both the developer and the community if it were reworked. So that's my opinion.
I actually like the project. I think you've thought and thought out, basically, a lot of the issues with the lot itself, as it sits right now, to, I mean, it was well thought out with the, with the, making sure that you can keep the water, retain it within the property itself. I actually like the look of the two-story versus, you could, at any point in time, go in and put in a three-story with the units, not have to comply with anything, not have to take into consideration any of the neighbors, just do it blindly, and you're done. And your neighbors would be impacted one way or another. They have say-so right now, but they would not have say-so if you were to put in a bigger building. So I actually am fine with the project as it sits.
Just to clarify, staff has confirmed that the maximum height for this building is two and a half stories, not a three-story building. It's two and a half. It's two and a half. Okay, by right. Let's put it that way. Max is two and a half stories by right. Okay. So, my thoughts on this are very similar to most of my colleagues, who have said it much better than I, and I've spoken far too much tonight. It really comes down to me that it's not the minimum change necessary, and I appreciate what you've tried to do. I just think that your approach, your, your single-minded focus on the one product type perhaps led you down a path that you couldn't get out of. So, unfortunately, I cannot support this project. So, we're going to go down the seven standards for a major variation here. And the first is, the requested variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment, or property values of adjoining properties. This is a little bit of a mixed bag, because I think, quite honestly, this building would have a, an important positive impact on the property values. I think that this is much nicer-looking and more marketable, certainly, than what is there now. However, I do think that the, the density and the amount of lot coverage will have an adverse impact on the neighbors' use and enjoyment of their property. So, I don't believe that that standard has been met. Number two, the requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. The intent of the zoning ordinance is to allow property owners to redevelop their property as needs change. And certainly, what we were building in the 50s is certainly not what people want to live in today. We all know that, and we accept that, and we know that there has to be change. We just hope for a change that's a little bit more thoughtful and less intrusive on neighbors. So, I do not believe that that's, so I believe that that standard has been met. Number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. In this instance, we have not heard of any hardship that relates specifically to the property. We're not trying to avoid trees, we're not trying, I mean, they are avoiding them, but that has no impact really on the size of the building, right? The building could be smaller, and you could still leave those trees alone. So, there is nothing unique to the property that causes the hardship for a need for 14 units, or a need for being over lot coverage, or impervious surface. So, I do not believe that that standard has been met. Number four, the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. I think this really is a mere inconvenience. It, it, it comes down to, as I see it, that it is, it's a financial decision, and the financial decision needs 14 units, but the financial decision is not something that we get to consider when we're taking into account zoning variances. So, I do not believe that that standard has been met. Number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property, and that there are public benefits. Now, I, I appreciate the, the effort to go through to approach some of these public benefits. I do know in talking with staff that there is a request from city staff to redo the bus, the bus, what's that called, the bus stop and the walkway, because they are so far behind in getting those up to date. So, there is certainly that, that, that is a benefit to the city, for sure. And I do want to make sure that you got credit for that, because I think that was missing somewhere in the, in the, in the conversation. However, some of the other benefits that you have proposed, I don't think are benefits so much to the community as they are to you. I think that the benefit of having these, these first-floor units allows you to have them be accessible, and by that accessibility, you get to say, "Well, I don't want to do brick pavers for walkways, I want to do concrete." And so, I don't believe that that standard has actually been met. Number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property. That doesn't really apply here, because we have not identified any hardship to this particular property. So, I don't think that that standard has been met. And number seven, the requested variation requires the least deviation from the applicable regulation among the feasible options identified. We've discussed, and in fact, there's been testimony, that you could do a compliant building, that there's really no reason except for financial, that you cannot meet those, the impervious surface and the lot coverage, and the density, sorry, the number of units. Truth be told, I'd be willing to give you the density, if you could get it to work, because I think density is important, and I think particularly for who you're trying to serve, a smaller house is probably more appropriate for them anyhow. And so, that's just, you know, my two cents on it. But I don't believe that that standard has been met by being the least deviation necessary. So, with that, do I have a motion?
Is it the...
You guys are so funny. You just hate that darn positive motion.
Well, it just makes no sense.
Let me tell you, when you're, when you're chair, feel free to change it.
Yeah. Okay, I'll move in the matter, 17ZMJV-0100, that we approve the variations that were requested, subject to the condition that the property be developed in accordance with the testimony and documents submitted.
Second.
It's a move in second. Did all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
With a vote of four to one, one to four, sorry. Unfortunately, your motion does not pass, and so hopefully you come back with something that we can all love.
Thank you very much for your thoughtful consideration.
All right. With that, do we have any business? We've got no business. Excellent.
I move we adjourn.
Thank you. Need a second?
Second.
It's a move in second. Did all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. I need more ayes. I need more ayes.
Aye.
Thank you.